Hi, I'm Terry Curran. I'm a volunteer for Senator Sanders. And when they asked me to volunteer to introduce him, they didn't tell me he was like a million people. And one more cheer. I will practice to make this very short. It gives me great pleasure to introduce a true American hero. U.S. Senator Bernie Sanders has for over thirty years been the nation's most persistent voice defending the interests of the working class in standing up to the excesses of corporate America. No one has focused more attention on the critically important issue of the growing gap between rich and everyone else than Bernie Sanders. It is a great honor. It is a great honor to introduce... to introduce... let me try that. It is a great honor to introduce the man who dedicates every waking hour to working for people of the middle class. Ladies and gentlemen, U.S. Senator Bernie Sanders. Oh, what a turnout. Seven to nine, I can't hear you all. Thank you all very much for coming out. What we're gonna do tonight is practice something that is extremely radical. Ready for radical ideas? We're gonna practice democracy. How's that? What I want to do this evening is talk about what I believe are some of the major issues facing our country. We'll open it up to your questions and comments. But before I do that, I want to talk a little bit about the nature of our campaign. Because I think what you're gonna see in our campaign is not only a vision and ideas that are different than other candidates, but you're also gonna see the process and the nature of a campaign which is very different from other candidates. And why I mean by that is I will be the only candidate to come before you and tell you the very simple truth that is not widely reported. And that is no president of the United States, not Bernie Sanders, not anybody else, is going to address the major issues facing our country without a strong grassroots movement which is prepared to stand up to the billionaire class. The truth is, and again, it's a truth that media doesn't talk about, not will be widely reported, is that the powers of the establishment, of the big money interests, of the wealthy campaign dominance that are funding virtually all of the campaigns out there, the power of their lobbyists is such that no president can sit down alone and be successful in negotiating with them. The only way we win is when millions of people around this country stand up together and say enough is enough. Congress and Washington have got to start representing us rather than people. In other words, what I believe in is a politics that starts at the grassroots and filters on up rather than the other way around. Let me give you just a few examples of what I mean. A few years ago, in Washington, virtually every Republican and some Democrats were talking about cutting Social Security. That's right. And at a time when millions of seniors in New Hampshire, Vermont, and around this country are trying to acquire twelve, thirteen, fourteen thousand dollars per year, are having to make choices between buying the food they need or heating their homes and getting the medicine that they require, you do not cut Social Security for those people, okay? So, what we did is they started a caucus in Washington, which I initiated, called the Defending Social Security Caucus. And all over this country, seniors in the trade union movement and others begin to stand up and say, "No, no, no, you're not gonna cut Social Security." In fact, what we have to do is to expand Social Security. Three days ago, three days ago, there was a poll done by the Wall Street Journal. And what the poll shows, that by a sixty-one percent to twenty percent, the American people think we should increase Social Security benefits by lifting the cap on taxable income, exactly what we're trying to do. In other words, when you are right on the issues and you're prepared to go out to the people and rally people, you can change consciousness. So the discussion now will not be cutting Social Security, but how much we expand it and how we do that. Let me give you another example. A few years ago, three, four years ago, the SEIU, had any people here from the SEIU? Okay, one of your great leaders in America and others. They started organizing low-wage fast-food workers. And what they said, and what I had the honor of being in some demonstrations and meeting with these workers, what they said is that people cannot survive on seven dollars and twenty-five cents an hour. Can't be done. Gotta raise the minimum wage. What happened is, in Washington, the Republicans, of course, not only did not want to raise the minimum wage, they wanted to lower the minimum wage by giving away with the concept of the minimum wage. Democrats came forward and said, "Okay, let's raise the minimum wage to ten cents an hour." But you know what's going on all over this country? People are saying, "We have got to raise the minimum wage, not to ten cents an hour, but to fifteen dollars an hour." And the cities, towns, and states, minimum wage is going up. Couple of months ago, Los Angeles City Council, they had votes to raise the minimum wage to fifteen bucks an hour. Now here's my point. All over this country, at the grassroots level, people are organizing and fighting to raise the minimum wage. Wall Street Journal poll says that by a forty-eight to thirty-eight percentage, people believe we should raise the minimum wage to fifteen dollars an hour. Give you another example of how politics really works from the grassroots on up. Yesterday, as you know, by a six to three vote, Supreme Court, every once in a while they get it right, and they got it right. And what they've said is that in America, we are not gonna have a discriminatory society. We're gonna treat gay couples the same way we treat heterosexual couples. Now, how did it happen? Do you think that six folks on the Supreme Court suddenly woke up one day and said, "No, I think that we've gotta move to justice and equality, and we just gotta do it"? It didn't happen that way. It happened for forty years or fifty years, people fought and struggled for gay rights. And they changed consciousness in America. I go around my own state for a while, they often go to high schools, and I ask the kids, or they ask me questions, or I ask them questions, and I often would ask them, "Governor, what do you think about gay marriage?" And they kind of look at me in blank, square eyes and, "Duh." What's the big deal? Twenty years ago, ten years ago, that would not have been the response. But again, people educate, they organize, and that's how change comes about, and then it filters on top, and yet six people on the Supreme Court would finally echo what the vast majority of Americans do. Now, this is the story of every important social movement in American history. It's the suffrage, it's the story of the Civil Rights Movement, it's the story of the Women's Movement, it's the story of the Environmental Movement, it's the story of the trade union movement. When people stand up, fight back, get organized, that is when change takes place. Now, in our country, in recent years, we have seen some very, very positive developments, I believe, in terms of creating a less discriminatory society. The fact that we now take for granted that we have an African-American who's president of the United States is not to be taken for granted. If we were sitting here thirty or forty years ago, and we discussed that, people would say, "The odds of electing a black president in the year 2008 would have been less than zero." Nobody thought it would happen, but it did happen because America overcame a lot of its racism. It happened. The explosion we're seeing in women's rights, the sexism still exists in America, of course it does. But we are breaking down barrier after barrier. We're making progress because women for decades have stood up and fought back and said they will not be second-class citizens. Forty or fifty years ago, if a couple had a child with a disability, what happened to that child, you know? How was that child born? That child, that's right, as often as not, there was a feeling of shame, something they did was wrong. As often as not, a child would be institutionalized. But because millions of people stood up and said, "That's wrong," right now throughout America, Vermont and Hampshire, all over America, we have kids with disabilities who are in our school system, they are loved and protected by their classmates, they are understood to be one-hundred percent human beings with every right that everybody else has. That didn't happen by accident. It happened because people said, "That's what justice is about, that's what equality is about, and we're gonna make it happen." We have made a lot of gains, but there is one area where not only we are not making progress, we are falling further and further behind. And that is in terms of economic struggle that exists today. So here are all the simple facts. The facts are that the United States of America today has more income and wealth inequality than any major country on earth, and that the situation is becoming worse and worse. Today, we are living in a nation in which we have more income and wealth inequality than at any time since nineteen twenty-eight. And the fact of the matter is, in my view, that the issue of income and wealth inequality is the great moral issue of our time, it is the great economic issue of our time, and it is the great political issue of our time. And let me be as clear as I can be. Now, this is an issue. It's a tough issue, because it's not an issue that the media feels comfortable with, it's not an issue that a lot of people feel comfortable with. It's one thing to say that we believe in civil rights, we believe in gay rights. It is another thing, a much more difficult thing, to look the billionaire class in the eye and say, "You cannot have it all." There is something profoundly wrong. I want you to hear this, I'm gonna bore you a little bit tonight with some statistics. But you're not gonna see them on TV, and you're not gonna hear other people talking about it, so tough luck, you're here tonight, you're gonna have to hear it. And I want you to think about this. Today in America, the top one-ten of one percent owns almost as much wealth as the bottom ninety percent. Since nineteen eighty-five, there has been a massive transfer of wealth from the middle class and working families to the top one-ten of one percent. There is something, in my view, terribly wrong, when in recent years, we have seen a proliferation of millionaires and billionaires at the same exact time as we have the highest rate of childhood poverty of any major country on earth. Today in America, you have one family, one family, the Walton family, that owns more wealth than the bottom forty-two percent of Americans. In the last two years, two years, the wealthiest fifteen people in this country increased their wealth by a hundred and seventy billion dollars in a two-year period that is more wealth than is owned by the bottom one-hundred and thirty million Americans. Today, ninety-nine percent of all new income generated goes to the top one percent. That is the kind of nation we are living in. In my view, that level of income and wealth inequality is not only immoral, it is unsustainable, it is not what America is about, and we together have got to change it. Now, this is a tough one. This is a tough fight, because these guys not only have the money, they have the power. When you see some of these Republican guys and others coming to New Hampshire, understand that they have super PACs funded by the wealthiest people in this country. And the wealthiest people in this country aren't that dumb. They know exactly who they are funding and why they are funding them. But it is not just income and wealth inequality which has reached outrageous proportions in America. It is the fact, and all of us are got to appreciate this, that for the last forty years, the great middle class of our country, once the envy of the entire world has been disappearing. And I want you to be thinking about, how does it happen that despite a huge explosion of technology and a huge increase in worker productivity, so that every one of you as workers are producing far, far more than people in similar jobs twenty years ago? How does it happen that by a launch, you are working longer hours for lower wages? How does that happen? How does it happen that median family income is almost five thousand dollars less today than it was in nineteen ninety-nine? I can tell you that in Vermont, I know it's true here in New Hampshire, but it's important for you to not take this for granted, to look at it not as something that is normal. Don't accept this wrong. In this state, in my state, all over this country, you have workers who are not working one job, they're working two jobs, they're working three jobs, trying to cobble together income and some healthcare benefits. That is not what America is supposed to be about. We need an economy that works for the middle class and working families, not an economy where ninety-nine percent of all new income goes to the top one percent. And let me tell you something else that you'll read about very often, you'll see on the TV. And that is, once a month, the government comes out with unemployment statistics. So what they call is official unemployment nationally is about five-point-four percent. The truth, though, is there's another government statistics that talks about real unemployment. And that includes people who have given up looking for work and people who are working part-time, and there are millions of them when they want to work full-time. That statistic tells us that real unemployment in this country is close to eleven percent. And then let me tell you something that is really frightening, which is also never talked about. One point I want to make throughout this evening is that it is important for us to ascertain what the real issues are, not the TV and not newspapers, because very often they don't get it right. And let me tell you about youth unemployment today, which is meant to discuss. How often do you hear discussions about youth unemployment?
Never.
All right. So here you have the Economic Policy Institute, which is a very well-respected think-tank in Washington. They did a study looking at census data. This is what they found. They found that for young white kids between seventeen and twenty, who had graduated high school or dropped out of high school, the real unemployment rate was thirty-three percent. For Hispanic kids, the real unemployment rate was thirty-six percent. For African-American kids, the real unemployment rate was fifty-one percent. Now, that is a national tragedy. This is a whole generation of young kids graduate high school, maybe they drop out of high school. We got five-and-a-half million of these kids all over America who are hanging out on street corners and getting into trouble, which tells me that it is much more sensible for us to invest in education and jobs rather than jails and hospitals. This is an issue that has to be addressed. Now, let me talk about another reality that many of you are familiar with. And that is that millions of our fellow Americans are employed today in wages that are totally inadequate. In my view, the current federal minimum wage of seven dollars and twenty-five cents an hour is a starvation wage and must be raised. I don't believe that it is a terribly radical idea to say that somebody who works forty hours a week should not be living in poverty. We've got to raise the minimum wage to fifteen bucks an hour over the next few years. And when we talk about wage increases, we also understand that wages have got to be equitable. There is no excuse for women making seventy-eight cents on the dollar compared to men who are paying for women. Now, some of you, some of you don't know, a number of my Republican colleagues go around the country talking about family values. Have you heard these guys talking about family values?
Oh, yeah.
All right. This is what they mean by family values. Their idea of a family value is that a woman should not be able to control her own body. Their idea of family values is that, and this is almost unbelievable, that a woman should not be able to buy the contraceptives that she wants. Their idea of family values is opposition to gay rights and gay marriage. That is their view of family values, and I strongly disagree with that. But it is incumbent upon us not just to disagree with them, but to come up with a set of values that really are family values. And let me tell you what I think real American family values are. In my view, the United States must end the international embarrassment of being the only major country on earth which does not guarantee workers paid medical and family leave, paid sick time, and paid vacation. Now, let us talk about perhaps the most basic family value that we can think of, and that is a mother having a baby. All over the world, what countries say is that when a mom and a dad have a baby, they have the right to get to know their baby in the first weeks in months of their baby life. If that's not a family value, I don't know what family value is. In America today, we are the only major country on earth which does not guarantee this right. This is what you have. You have low-income, working-class, middle-class, giving birth to babies. And you know what they have to do? Because they don't have any income coming in, they have got to go back to work a week after they give birth, two weeks after they give birth. That is not a family value. And that is why the United States has got to join the rest of the world and at least have one month for a paid family leave to blow. It is not a family value to say to a worker that if your kid is sick, you cannot stay home with that kid. That is not a family value. And let me tell you something else, which we do not talk about at all, but is enormously important, not a sexy issue, but an enormously important issue. As a result of the collapse of the American middle class, what people have had to do in order to cobble together an income is work longer and longer hours. Today, you may know this, you may not know this, that the American people are working longer hours than any people in a major industrialized country on earth. The Japanese are very hard workers. We work a hundred and thirty-seven hours a year more than the Japanese. We work two-hundred-and-sixty hours a year more than the British and well-do's French. That's why we love them. We work almost five-hundred hours a year more than the French. Now, I want you to think about this. And I'm really doing it, because these are issues we don't discuss, we have got to put them on the table. You remember reading history textbooks and seeing pictures in the early nineteen hundreds of workers' demographics? And the workers would hold up banners. And you know what those banners said? What'd those banners say? "We want a forty-hour work week." That's what they said a hundred years ago. What they said is, "We are not beasts of burden. We want time off for our families. We want time off for education. We need relaxation. We want a forty-hour work week." One hundred years have come and gone, and today, eighty-five percent of working men and sixty-six percent of working women work more than forty hours a week. We are losing that struggle. At the very least, what we need to say is that every worker in this country is entitled to two weeks off with paid vacation. It's been hard to find. You know, these are friends. How do we use the power? How do you talk about family values, and a mom and dad and their kids have no time off? Not the time to get to know each other, quality time, at all. Now, when posters go out and they ask the American people, say, "What is uppermost on the line? What do you really care about the most?" Invariably, the answer is jobs and the economy. Invariably, the answer is jobs and the economy. And the answer, the reason for that, is that people understand that real unemployment is much too high, youth unemployment is off the charts. In my view, we've got to step up to the plate and demand and fight for a massive federal jobs program which puts our people back to work. All of you know, all of you know, that our infrastructure, that is our roads, our bridges, our water systems, wastewater plants, our rail, our levees, our dams, are in a state of significant deterioration. We can create millions of decent-paying jobs, make our country more efficient, safer, and more productive by putting people back to work, rebuilding our crumbling infrastructure. And when we talk about jobs, there is another issue which is not a particularly sexy issue either, but it is an enormously important issue. Since 2001, in this nation, in New Hampshire, in Vermont, and all across America, we have lost almost 60,000 factories and millions of decent-paying jobs. There are a number of reasons why our nation has become de-industrialized. But in my view, the major reason is a disastrous set of trade policies which allow corporate America to shut down here and move abroad. As elected president, we have got to fundamentally change those trade policies. Tonight, when you go home, you turn on the tube, you're going to see every major corporation in America say, "Buy this and buy that." If they want us to buy their products, the time is long overdue for them to start investing in the United States and not in China. Now, now, what issue you are concerned about, jobs, education, health, community, environment, whatever it may be, they all center around, conflate with one enormous issue that every person in America has got to be deeply concerned about. And that is that as a result of a disastrous Supreme Court decision in a citizens' united face, the American political system has become totally corrupted and the foundations of American democracy are being undermined. What the Supreme Court essentially said to the wealthiest people in this country, they said, "Hey, congratulations, you own most of America. We're now going to give you the opportunity to own the United States government." And as a result of that decision, and it's important you all understand this, as we speak, super PACs are collecting often in undisclosed donations, we don't know who's making it, but the wealthiest people in this country are pouring hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars into the political system. One family alone can hear this, the Koch brothers, second wealthiest family in Earth. I am being nice, so it's worse than that. This one family, who has been on the record for years in terms of wanting to eliminate, kill, Social Security, Medicaid, the US postal system, and virtually every piece of legislation passed since Franklin Delano Roosevelt was president that protects working families, this one family will spend close to $1 billion in this election cycle. Brothers and sisters, that is more money than the Democratic Party is going to spend, it is more money than the Republican Party is going to spend. When one multi-billionaire family spends more money on an election than either of the two major political parties, this does not sound like democracy to me, it sounds like oligarchy. And that has not been it. Let me, let me make a promise to you that I have made elsewhere, I'll repeat it here. If elected president, I will have a litmus test for nominees to the US Supreme Court. And I do not nominate any individual who is not prepared publicly to say that he or Further, further, overturning Citizens United is a start, not an end. We've got to go further than that. I want to see a vibrant democracy in America where any person, regardless of his or her political views, conservative, progressive, whatever you may be, feels free to run for office, whether it's school board or president of the United States, without being beholden to wealthy people. What is going on now, and I know this, I spent time in Washington DC, you do not have any idea about the amount of time that members of Congress and candidates for Congress spend praising money. Instead of doing the people's business, they're on the phone dialing for dollars. It is getting worse and worse. And that is why, in my view, we've got to move to a public funding of elections. Let me touch on another issue which I think is gaining a lot of momentum in all of this country. Everybody in this room knows that we live in a highly competitive global economy, and that if we are going to succeed as a nation, we need to have the best educated workforce in the world.
Goddamn right.
30 years ago, the United States was number one in the percentage of young people who graduated college. Today, we are in 12th place. Today, in America, unbelievably and changely, there are hundreds of thousands of low-income and working-class kids, kids who are bright, kids who are qualified, kids who want to go to college, but are not going to be able to go to college because their families do not have the necessary funds. That is an outrage. It is absurd because we are taking away the ladder of success from those young people. But even more absurd, how do you have a strong and growing economy if we push aside all of the intellectual capability of hundreds of thousands of young people? We have to encourage people to get an education, not a surgery. And a certain part of that praise is equally absurd, is there are millions of people today, younger people and not so young people, who are struggling under the burden of incredibly oppressive student debt. I interviewed a woman recently, she's spending 25% of her income paying off her debt. There are couples out there who don't get married, don't have kids, can't buy a home, can't buy a car because of this oppressive debt. And you have this incredibly absurd situation where if you want to refinance your home today, when interest rates are low, you could do that for 2% or 3%. But millions of people are stuck with interest rates on student debt of 7%, 8%, 9%. What sense does that make? What I have done is introduce legislation, and I will see it implemented as president of those two things. First, we will make every public college and university in America tuition-free. This, now, some people think this is a radical idea. It's a radical idea, frankly. You have countries all over the world, Germany, Scandinavia, other countries, who understand that for their own economic future, that they want every kid who has the ability to be able to get a higher education. I spoke to a woman last year in Burlington, Vermont. Her crime in life was becoming a primary care physician treating low-income and working families. And for that crime, she is now $300,000 in debt. Spoke to a young woman who graduated dental school. We desperately need more dentists in this country to create affordable, accessible dental care. Her crime is that she is now $400,000 in debt. This is crazy stuff. So what we have got to do is, number one, in our legislation documents, allow people who have student debt to refinance their loans, take advantage of low-interest rates. And second of all, what Obama did, he did something that was smart. He took the profit-making on student loans out of the private banks and he put them into the government. But in my view, the United States government should not be profiteering off of high-interest rates for working-class families. In the U.S., you can lower interest rates on student debt by more than half, and that is exactly what we have. Let me touch on another issue. You know, one of the problems we have is I end up talking too long in general. But there are so many issues out there, they're just really disgusting. And there's one issue that we just cannot avoid. And that is that when we talk about our responsibilities as human beings and as parents, and I've got four kids and seven grandchildren, there is nothing more important than leaving to them a planet that is healthy and happy. The debate is over. The scientific community has spoken in a virtually unanimous voice. Climate change is real. Climate change is caused by human activity, as we have seen recently in California with their drought, as we have seen in Karachi, Pakistan with that terrible heat wave which is killing thousands of people. Climate change today is already causing devastating problems in our country and around the world. And this is what the scientists hope. And I sit on both the Environmental Committee and the Energy Committee, and I hear from these guys all the time. And what they told us is that if we allow the status quo to continue, if we don't boldly transform our energy system, this planet Earth will be between 5 degrees and 10 degrees warmer by the end of this century. That is unbelievable. That means more drought, more floods, more extreme weather disturbances, more acidification of the ocean, more rising sea levels, and what the CIA and Department of Defense tell us, these are also huge national security issues. Because when people around the world don't have water, when they don't have land to grow their food, they're going to migrate, and there are going to be conflicts, and there will be war. We have a moral responsibility to transform our energy system away from fossil fuel through the energy efficiency and sustainable energies like wind, solar, geothermal, And think for a moment what America looks like, what our college campuses and our young people are, when they know that as a nation, we are leading the world, and we can't do it alone. But we are leading the world, we're working with China, we're working with Russia, we're working with countries around the world to save this planet. Think what that would mean to our country. There's another issue that I want to touch on. As you know, last week, again, the Supreme Court did the right thing and sustained federal exchanges in Affordable Care Act. Now, I am a member of the Health Education Labor Committee that helped write the bill, and I can tell you this was kind of a no-brainer. No one, no Republicans, no Democrats, nothing. We're talking about looking at federal exchanges differently than state exchanges. This was just bogus argument that people brought in to try to destroy the Affordable Care Act. But having said that, let me be very clear about what came. In the same sense that we are the only major country on Earth that does not guarantee family and medical leave, that does not guarantee paid patient time or paid sick time, I hope all of you know that we are the only major country on Earth that does not guarantee health care to all people as the right. Only one. And what that means is that despite the gains of the Affordable Care Act, we still have 35 million people with zero health insurance, and we have people in this room with high deductibles and copains, alright? Meanwhile, our life expectancy is lower than most other countries, our infant mortality rates are higher, and in a number of diseases, treating diseases, we don't do as well as many other countries. And for all of that, we end up paying almost twice as much per person on health care as do the people of any other nation. So it seems to me we have got to deal with two basic questions. Number one, should health care be a right of all people in this country? In my view, the answer is yes. If we're not going to guarantee health care to all, as I believe we should, how do you do it in a way that is cost-effective, that is non-bureaucratic, that is non-complicated? We have the most complicated healthcare system in the world. People are pulling their hair out trying to fill out all of the damn forms. Our people are paying by far the highest prices for prescription drugs than the people of any other country. A number of years ago, some of you may know, when I was in the House, I was the first member of Congress to take Americans across the Canadian border to buy prescription drugs. And as long as I live, I will never forget that day, because we have a busload of women from northern Vermont, and many of them are dealing with breast cancer, working-class women dealing with breast cancer. Went to a pharmacy in Montreal, and all this had been worked out, so we knew what was going to happen. They walked in there, and they bought some of the medicine that they needed to deal with breast cancer. They paid, at that point, this is a one of that, 1/10 of the price that they were paying in the United States, and tears were coming down their eyes. So we have got to tell the pharmaceutical industry that they cannot continue to rip off the American people and charge the prices for the United States. I do not get upset when I get attacked by representatives of the wealthy and powerful. In fact, I welcome their dislike. Back in 1936, Franklin Delano Roosevelt ran for reelection. That was the middle of the Depression. And as you know, he put together a number of policies that created millions of jobs. And people, he called the economic whalers what we would call the billionaire class today, they hated his guts. And what he said, he said in so many words, he said, "I welcome your hatred, because I am going to stand with the working families of this country, and I echo those feelings." And I want to tell you this, it doesn't bother me to be attacked by a big money trust. I'm delighted to accept that, because that suggests we're doing something right. But this is what bothers me very much, and where I need your help. It does bother me a whole lot that we have working-class people in New Hampshire, in Vermont, and across this country who, day after day, election after election, keep voting against their own best interests and the interests of their kids. That bothers me a lot. That bothers me a lot. You and I together, that's what we're going to do in this campaign. We're going to take it right to them. Now, I don't mind if you've got some greedy billionaire, you know, who wants to give himself what tax breaks and cut Social Security. I understand where they're coming from. We understand where they're coming from. We're going to take them off. But here's what I need your help to do. Tell me, go to your working-class friends, your middle-class friends, your family members, and ask them. Ask them this, "I am the ranking member of US Senate Budget Committee, that means leader of the opposition, representative of the Democrats, we're in the bottom row. And we just came forward with a budget, a Republican budget, uh, I think about six weeks ago. This is what was in that budget." And we need to be very clear what was in the budget. And the budget is the framework for the Appropriations Committee to go forward in legislation. This was in, is in their budget. They decided to end the Affordable Care Act and cut Medicaid by over $400 billion. That results in 27 million Americans losing health insurance. And when you sit there, as I do, and you say to them, "Excuse me, when you throw 27 million people off of health insurance, how many, how many of those are going to die? How many of them will become much sicker than they otherwise would have been?" Can you please tell me? What studies have you done on that? They have nothing to say. When all over this country, middle-class families are struggling to send their kids to college, Republican budget cut over a 10-year period $90 billion from Pell Grants, which are the major federal source of help for low and moderate-income families to go send their kids to college. $90 billion. At a time, I'll tell you a story that I heard in Iowa a few weeks ago in Des Moines. And I, or it's out at the farmer's market there. And, um, the, um, there's a church group there that collects some of the food that is not sold at the farmer's market and then takes it to an emergency food shop. And I pointed to the guy there, really very nice people. And I said, I tricked him, I said, "What percentage of the people who go to the emergency food shop in the Des Moines area are working people?" He said, "90%." That means that you've got people who are just working at wages that are so low they can't feed their families. What the Republican budget did was make billions of dollars in cuts to nutrition programs that now feed hungry kids, including cuts to the WIC program, which is designed for low-income, pregnant women, and their babies. That's what they cut. And then to add insult to injury, after cutting healthcare, education, nutrition programs, and a whole lot more, they decided that a major priority for America was to repeal the estate tax and give over $200 billion in tax breaks to the wealthiest 2/10 of 1%. 2/10 of 1%. Okay? Now, what we have got to do, and I will do this in the campaign all over this country, but you have got to do it as well. You've got to go to your Republican friends, people of middle class or working class, and ask them whether they really believe that it is a good idea to give hundreds of billions of dollars in tax breaks to the top 2/10 of 1%. Ask them whether they think it is a good idea for the Republicans to make it harder for their kids to go to college or for people to eat adequately in America. And you know what I think? I think we can get through to many of these Republicans. I understand. What we have to be aware of and accept, that in a democracy, people have differences of opinion on a lot of issues. People disagree on abortion, people disagree on gay rights, environmental stuff. But at the very least, on economic issues, where we're fighting for the better welfare of our kids and our parents, I would hope that we can stand together on those basic economic issues. So let me conclude my remarks by just saying this. Um, we need, in this country, in my very strong view, a political revolution. And what that means is we cannot continue to do politics in the same old, same old establishment way. The agenda that I have just discussed with you is frankly not a radical agenda at all. It is a mainstream agenda supported by the vast majority of the American people. If you want to hear a radical fringe agenda, take a listen to what some of these Republican candidates for president are talking about. That's a lot of criticism, Ken. So what we have got to do in this campaign is to transform American politics. We've got to go out to the young people, 80% of whom did not vote in the last midterm election. We've got to go out to our neighbors and our coworkers, 63% of whom did not vote in the last election. And when they tell you that politics is all crap, why are you wasting time coming to a meeting from a senator from Vermont? You tell them that if politics is so stupid and so irrelevant, why is the Koch Brothers going to spend $1 billion on this? So what I hope you will do, Ron, I beg of you, I beg of you, don't think small, think big. Today, today, the United States of America is the wealthiest nation in the history of the world. We are not a poor developing country. The choice should not be whether we cut education by 2% or 4%. The choice should be how we make sure that every person in this country has the ability to get a college education. The choice should not be Republicans throwing 27 million people off of health insurance. The choice should be how we come up with a system that guarantees healthcare to all people. The choice should not be ignoring the planetary crisis of climate change, but the choice should be how we go forward as aggressively as humanly possible in transforming our energy system. So please, think big, don't think small. Don't think we have to cut and cut and cut. What we need to do significantly is undo the transfer of wealth that went from the middle class to the top 1/10 of 1%. We need that money back in the hands of the middle class and working-class. Now, I'll tell you why I think we're going to win this election. I'll tell you why I think we're going to win here in New Hampshire. We're going to win because we're going to do politics the very, very old-fashioned way, the way I always do it. We are going to have dozens of meetings exactly like the meeting we're having here tonight. We're going to do this all over the state of New Hampshire. We're going to bring people out and we're going to talk about the most important issues. And that's how we win. We win it the old-fashioned way, talking to people, knocking on doors, getting on campus. And in order, in order to do that, we need a strong grassroots movement, and we're building that. Let me, I'm telling you very proudly that we already have hundreds of thousands of people in every state in this country who have signed up to help us in this campaign. Now, we don't get any money from billionaire trusts and we don't have a super PAC. But we have, as of this moment, some 200,000 people who have made contributions. And you know what the average contribution is? It's about $35.00. How's that? And that is what our people's campaign is about. So at the end of the day, yes, our opponents will have more money than we will. That's no, no doubt about that. But we have something that they do not have. We're going to have the united people working together to transform America. And with your help, that is what we do. Thank you so much.